All right then. Noting that the time is 2:02, I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, commissioners, members of the public, others. And thank you for joining for our latest regular meeting of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. I'll begin by asking the IRC clerk, David Hall, for information about today's meeting. David?
Thank you, Chair Bame. At this time, I would invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting to please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at www.sandiegocounty.gov/redistricting. We ask that individuals who wish to speak submitted online request-to-speak form in advance for planning purposes. All timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting will be honored. In addition, agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Filipino, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, and Laotian as required by law. Chair Bame?
Thank you, David. The next item on the agenda is the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Before I call the roll, I'd like to note for the record that all commissioners are participating via teleconference, and as such, all votes will be handled by a roll call vote. I'll ask the commissioners to please unmute your microphone and say here or present. Chair Bame?
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina?
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Dossel? Commissioner Diaz is here. Commissioner Dossel?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Inman?
Here.
Commissioner Krugliak? Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Pons?
Here.
Commissioner Russ?
Here.
Commissioner Serbin?
Here.
Thank you, Chair Bame.
There we go. Thank you, David. The next item on the agenda is non-agenda public communication speakers. This has always since an opportunity for the public to address the commission on subject matters within the commission's jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. The only action the commission may take is to refer old staff. As a reminder, this means the IRC cannot vote to approve any items raised by the public under this portion of the meeting today because it's not on our agenda. But commissioners can ask staff to follow up on any questions and can request to add items for consideration at a future meeting when we get to future agenda items later in the meeting today. With that, David, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on non-agenda matters today?
Chair Bame, we do not have any members of the public who have requested to address the commission in advance on non-agenda items, but if anybody would like to address the commission on items that don't appear on today's agenda, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. I'd also like to note for the record that the commission's log of ex parte communications received has been updated on the website. And not seeing any requests to speak, this concludes non-agenda public comment. Chair Bame?
Thank you very much, David. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 27, 2021 regular meeting. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item?
We do not have any members of the public who have requested to address the commission in advance, but if anybody would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any requests to speak, this concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I'd like to recall our discussion of budget issues at our most recent meetings and invite Barbara Jimenez to provide a further update on action by the Board of Supervisors. Barbara, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. Just to report back as a follow-up to the communication regarding the IRC's request for a budgetary increase of $467,500. This was approved by the County Board of Supervisors at their meeting earlier this week on June 8. Staff is moving forward with the administrative next steps for the transfer of funds, and we'll have an update for the IRC as part of the monthly budget update at our next meeting. So unless there are any questions, this concludes my update.
Thank you very much for that, Barbara. On behalf of the commission, let me offer thanks to you, Liberty, Nicole, the IRC Budget Ad hoc Committee, and again, from me, to all the commissioners for the great work and team effort to get to this point. I'm sure we all agree that we will continue to adhere to the highest standards in fulfilling our duties as good stewards of public funds. So, turning back to the minutes from our last meeting, are there any clarifying questions or comments from commissioners? Very good. As this is an action item that requires a motion before any discussion, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 27, 2021 meeting?
I move.
Good. Just picking out of my hat, we'll take the motion from Commissioner Brown, second from Commissioner Russ. Any discussion? Very good. David, could you please call the roll for the vote?
Thank you, Chair Bame. Commissioner Larson? Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak? Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? I think you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. My finger's sticky too. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Pons? You may be muted as well, Commissioner Pons?
No. Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Dossel?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? I didn't catch that from Commissioner Inman.
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Chair Bame, that motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much, David, and thank you, commissioners. The next item for the IRC's consideration today is Agenda Item 5, entitled, "Discussion Impossible Concurrents with the Source Selection Committee," or SSC's, "Application of the Scoring Criteria Defined by the IRC for All Proposals Received in Response to RFP 10673 for Redistricting Demographer Services and SSC Notice of Intent to Flow Analytics." I'm going to beg commissioners' indulgence while I go into a little bit of history here for the record to review how we got to this point. In a few moments, I'm going to ask for comments from Ross Martin, who graciously agreed to serve as chair of the Source Selection Committee for this RFP, and will provide an update on the SSC's recommendation for the contract award for possible IRC concurrence. To start the review discussion, though, I think the key point to remember for our discussion today is that the demographer will be supporting the work of the IRC. The commission will still make all the decisions that we are required and have chosen to make. Certainly, we'll be informed by the knowledge and expertise of our demographer, but ultimately, it is the IRC that will guide the demographer where the lines on the map should be placed for their drafts. That, of course, is our responsibility alone as the Independent Redistricting Commission. To review some key dates that got us here, you'll remember that on December 18, staff provided its initial presentation to the IRC with proposed options for the competitive procurement of redistricting contracted services. Following some discussion and requests for additional information from commissioners, on January 14, staff presented additional options that mirrored the state CRC process, which allowed for more public procurement process than was initially presented. The IRC then formed an ad hoc committee that developed a third option for the process. On January 28, the IRC approved that third option, as the slide you're about to see, as it was recommended by the AHC, which allowed for two ad hoc committees to be formed, one for each RFP. The flow chart of that process is displayed here, and I think we all remember that discussion in that review of the flow chart. You can note on here that the flow chart refers to the SSC for the Demographer Services RFP. That SSC began its work on May 11. The SSC had held several meetings and has now provided a report to the IRC with details of its evaluation of each proposal. This report includes how the SSC reviewed and scored proposals based on the IRC-defined criteria in the RFP in order to present an award recommendation to the IRC. That is where we are today, the yellow box second from the left on the bottom row. So, under this process, the IRC can conclude today that the SSC either did or did not accurately apply the scoring criteria. To detail those two options, if the IRC concludes that the SSC accurately applied the scoring criteria, the IRC will concur with the recommendation. That recommendation would then move forward towards negotiations and award of a contract, the two green boxes on the bottom line. On the other hand, if the IRC concludes that the SSC did not accurately apply the scoring criteria, the IRC will not concur with the recommendation, and we should provide an explanation for that decision. The SSC then would reconvene to review scoring and return later to the full IRC with a revised recommendation or proposed alternative action. That's my brief review of how we got to where we are and what we are doing today. So please keep in mind, as we begin to hear from Ross and the SSC in detail, we have a choice today between either concurring or not concurring with the SSC recommendation by which we are saying we do or do not agree that the SSC accurately applied the scoring criteria. With all that in mind, it is now my pleasure to introduce Ross Martin, who served as SSC Chair for this RFP. Ross is a Geographic Information Systems Manager, GIS, with the county's Land Use and Environment Group's Department of Planning and Development Services. He'll be providing a summary of the SSC report and its recommendation for contract award. Ross, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bame. It's my pleasure to be here today as the chair representing the Source Selection Committee, as mentioned. We did review the IRC's RFP for procurement for demographic services. Real quick background on myself, I've been at the county for 22 years, all of them in geographical information systems and geospatial data science, and I have a background in geography. If we could proceed with Slide 4. There we go. So I wanted to quickly review, the SSC was comprised of five voting members, all county employees, with work experience to qualify them to evaluate the proposal in the RFP and essentially to complete the work for the SSC. The members, as you can see here, myself, Pete Arthur from ROV, Catherine Gordon, Rich Grubman, and Ricardo Gutierrez from Health and Human Services. And as you mentioned earlier, the purpose, the explicit purpose for our job was to objectively evaluate each proposal in accordance with the evaluation criteria provided in the RFP per the IRC and to make a final recommendation for the contract award. So that was the total scope of our job. All right. The information about the positions, sorry, let me go forward one here. Once the RFP was closed, the proposals were received, we met and we conducted our evaluations of the proposals. The proposal and role the SSC was obviously to focus exactly on these things, as mentioned, and to provide back feedback to you, the IRC. A total of two proposals were received and evaluated, Flow Analytics and the Timmins Group. The criteria to evaluate the proposals was at first, the minimum requirements or pass/fail criteria, did they meet those based in the RFP? A review, a detailed review of the technical approach, which accounted for 50% of the overall scoring. An evaluation of the offerers' experience qualifications, which accounted for 25%, and then finally, an evaluation of the price offering, which is 25% as well. Details of the review of the criteria for all the proposals were included in the SSC report, which is provided today with the agenda materials. After careful evaluation of each proposal, the SSC recommends awarding the contract to Flow Analytics. The SSC concluded that the proposal from Flow Analytics provides the best value. Flow Analytics proposed a technical approach that demonstrates an accurate understanding of the requirements. The personnel assigned to the project were considered to have experience, sorry, to consider, to demonstrate their capability to perform the expectations, to perform to expectations, having experience with demographic analysis, using mapping software, dealing with public outreach, and some of the contemporaneous experiences with local electoral districts and redistricting projects. The Flow Analytics proposal indicated that they had researched and understood or understand the relevant regulatory requirements of the IRC's redistricting process, including the California Fair Maps Act, California Elections Code, Section 21550 through 21553, San Diego County's Charter, Section 400, and the Federal Voting Rights Act of 1965. Additionally, Flow Analytics stated that they had never been subject to any pending or past litigation. The references provided support their position, and, sorry, the provisions of the quality of their work. The proposed fixed price was below the estimated budget of $200,000, and pricing was considered to be predictable, which limits the pricing risk to the county's funds. So today, as the SSC Chair, I present an award recommendation on behalf of the SSC for the IRC to review and its consideration.
Well, thank you very much, Ross, for the presentation. We very much appreciate the time and contributions you and your colleagues have provided to our process by serving on this SSC and being here today. I also want to be very explicit in thanking the ad hoc committee for this RFP, which I know, and I think we all know, paved the way towards getting us to this point with all due regard for all relevant factors. It's all very, very appreciated. All right. We will now take up our usual process of clarifying questions, then public comment, then a motion, and a discussion under that motion. So with that, let me ask if there are any clarifying questions for Ross or other staff for counsel from commissioners? Commissioner Russ?
Yes, I noticed that Flow, FLL, had a lot of experience in school districts. They gave one example of experience they had with the city, and yet, was it Timmins seemed to have more experience with more of the political types of redistricting, including, in fact, the city of San Diego. So they were already, you know, pretty much, they would be pretty much familiar with, well, the layout of San Diego. The other thing was that on your, the, just a minute. On the price reasonableness, I seem to remember seeing $220,000 for one, and, okay, I see that, okay, that was for Timmins. All right, I see that now. But I guess my major question, though, is the experience with, well, with San Diego and the experience with, other than school districts. Can you address?
Sure, sure. And not to support or defend either of the RFP offerers, but to just point out that we did holistically evaluate the RFP proposal in its entirety, not just the experience, as said in the scoring rubric. And you're correct that the Timmins Group's designated subject matter expert has a considerable amount of expertise, and in this, you're referencing NDC and their work that they have done in the past with local districts. But in our consideration, as an RFP, and this is a holistic practice of going through this process with you, advising and providing you information, that the Timmins Group, to be honest, had almost zero expertise when it came to redistricting. It was only the member themselves, the individual themselves, that they had assigned as the subject matter expert that had the background. So in holistic practice, when we were looking at Flow Analytics, and yes, they had some experience with Snoomish County, Washington, Spokane County, Washington, and the city of Lincoln, California, and Plumas County, California, they didn't have the extensive background of dealing with so many different counties or small jurisdictions or city-states in terms of redistricting, but an extensive amount of outreach and public interaction at the school district level. So on total, in terms of grading just the presentations of the two RFPs, Flow came back as having a better offering. Does that help? I don't want to speculate beyond that.
No, no, that's fine. You've read this, you've been, I can't tell you, I've read every word. I scanned and I looked at things that I thought were important, and I was just curious as to, I thought Timmins had quite a bit, and particularly since they had the experience with the city of San Diego. I believe that was for the 2010 redistricting. All right, thanks so much, Ross.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So I did have Commissioner Chen, but I think he may have withdrawn, Commissioner? Yep, okay. So I have Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Hanson. Any other commissioners wishing to ask questions? Commissioner Diaz? Commissioner Serbin, did you just withdraw then?
I can defer to the end.
Okay, great. So we'll go Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Hanson, please.
I just wanted to clarify because it seems to me that the Timmins Group is a group of companies that work together, and their partnerships change from one kind of project to another. And so it seems as though NDC is not really a subcontractor in the typical sense of the term, but is rather one of a number of partners that has experience working together with the Timmins Group. So is that a fair assessment?
Um, if I were to evaluate the Timmins Group from the materials that they offered us and the information that was available on the internet referencing them, they look like they're predominantly a professional planning and engineering technical service group.
Agreed.
But they didn't reference in their professional experience any redistricting projects ever in the history that they present on their, you know, their company's website. So it appears that they are partnered with NDC, but they're the primary respondent as the RFP respondent.
I'm just curious why NDC didn't apply as a single proprietor. Why would they have partnered with Timmins and not applied on their own? Because, I mean, I guess we don't know that, right?
I don't have that information available to me.
Because they certainly are a part of all of this work in Southern California, all over California. They do a lot of trainings, and I certainly expected them to apply as an entity. So I was just curious why they would have applied as part of the Timmins Group. But I guess they don't have all the expertise in-house, maybe. I don't know. I just wanted to ask one other question about the Flow project. They did not seem to me to understand the role of the IRC and made reference to all of their communications with staff and with other contractors, but not with the IRC. So I suppose that's something we can work with them later, but they didn't seem to pick up on that in the issuance of the RFP.
And I believe there was some limited mention about making sure that the IRC is designated as point of contact through the execution of the project. But it may be that they're referencing their previous work or the protocols that they've executed in previous projects and how they interacted with their customers there.
Right. But I do think we need to be aware of that and make sure that they do understand that they would be working with the commission and not with staff first or other contractors first.
I believe they would understand, well, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, but as Rich could specify, you're the customer.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Diaz, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm very impressed with the RFP of Flow Analytics. Anyway, my question actually is on racially polarized voter data analysis. This is unique because we are combining an analysis component with the demography. And I want to, whereas in other jurisdictions, they've separated out, I want to, I just want to be, my question more is on data security and the types of software that your company is, or that Flow Analytics is planning on using.
Not my company.
No, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
That Alteryx software was mentioned in the RFP, and I just, I mean, I did just a quick Google search, and I was, saw, something came up about a security breaches that that company had, but I'm sure that, I just want to know what, how, if you feel that in your assessment of all the data tools that are going to be utilized that they mentioned in their RFP, if there was a sense of, you know, how this data would be properly used and stored? And then my second question is more along the lines of the legacy data format that we've been waiting for from the U.S. Census Bureau, and how, if, whether or not this candidate would be able to quickly use that data in a way that is going to be beneficial for us in terms of trying to get that in a way that we can use publicly? And then there was also mention of a web-based map tool.
So maybe, that's a lot to unpack, and I may ask you to repeat a portion of it, but why don't we go in reverse order in terms of how you asked the question? And this is, I mean, a subject that's near and dear to me outside the realm of just my role here as the chair for SDC, I'm sorry, SSC, that the security associated with data as it's presented in web formats and the appropriateness of the data and as it is being exposed is critical in what we call APT environments, advanced persistent threats, where you have both nation-state actors and you have others that are malicious actors that wish to get in and corrupt processes or deny individuals their access to the systems, as we've seen recently in these kind of nation-state news announcements that talk about pipelines being closed down, meat processing plants being crypto hacked, banks being corrupted, healthcare systems. So that's, it's a considerably enormous subject when it comes to the application of this technology. And anybody that's operating in this space is aware of these threats in terms of disruption. So to get to some of the specific points that you mentioned, the PL94171 data that needs to be used for this process, most, if not, I'd say all people that operate in this space of providing demographic redistricting services are waiting with bated breath to get their hands on it. And us, that we work in the GIS realm, we're only just recently receiving some of the line work for these updated census tracts and blocks as they're being provided from U.S. Census Bureau. So it's one of these things, like everybody's pretty much queued up and wanting to get access to the information. I imagine the expectation is that the minute that they're available, they would immediately incorporate it into their product to do these analyses as the baseline data that has to be present in the background for the software to work. Now, you mentioned a question like, is the information secure or are able to be used in a digital format? So their background that they're using, or should say, the background systems that they're using are generally considered secure. ArcGIS Online is one of the products that they're using. It can be configured to do two-factor or multi-factor authentication. Many of these products are designed, and it's unfortunate, they're designed to essentially have a double a double-edged sword. They're designed to be broadly used by the public, meaning accessible to anyone, accessible to individuals that just have web access, but also secure to an extent so that private groups within them can operate and use the information with security and share if needed, like, say, healthcare information with security. So it's very difficult to work in those spaces, but this is kind of the modern world that we are in, where we're we're trying to be as transparent as possible. We're trying to be as accessible as possible, meaning lowering the barriers of entry for individuals to use stuff. But it's still it's out there. So I don't know if I've directly answered your questions, but I'd say that anyone that's operating in this space that's using web-based software to do the analyses and then doing backend systems with the data is going to be following best practices for both security and backups to ensure that there's not, you know, alterations, corruptions of the data. Does that help? I know you have one more part of it. I admit there might have been one more part of it, the early part, but I just just wanted to stop talking for a second, make sure if I was.
No, I think you, I I mean, it it's kind of along the lines of what I thought. But yeah, it's secure cybersecurity in this day and age is such an important issue, and I'm glad that you answered my.
It is. Several federal certifications have been met by ArcGIS Online. I'm assuming Tableau has similar qualifications. The software that you mentioned called Arc, I'm mispronouncing it, but I want to say Alteryx. I want to say Arcteryx, but that's they make backpacks and climbing gear. Alteryx and our software, those are typically statistical packages, software that is used to do the deeper data analyses that go go in behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I want to thank you both for bringing that up because it is so important. It relates to some comments I think Commissioner Pons and others have made very early on about overall security, but particularly that dynamic, Ross, that you were talking about between public accessibility and some sort of protection for the data, including but not limited to the kind of data that Commissioner Diaz rightly pointed out. All right, I've got Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Russ. Did you want to ask a question too? So Commissioner Serbin, then Commissioner Russ, and then with the commission's permission, I'd like to move on from clarifying questions. Commissioner Serbin, please.
Yes, hi, this is Commissioner Serbin. Thank you for for recognizing me, Chair Baim. And thank you for the presentation, Mr. Martin. In, I guess, to follow up on Commissioner Diaz's question, we're working, to my understanding, with public data. So what is the the security risk?
What is the security risk to public data? There's no security risk to public data. I think your security risk, if, I mean, again, you're asking me to you're asking me to speculate on what type of threat could be present to you as the IRC consuming a product from a vendor. And it could be many. I could possibly miss one, but I can tell you from working in this industry, threats can come along the lines of your system being corrupted or denied you access, right? So like what we've seen where people attempted to lock it or disable it and held you for what's called ransom. So that's a threat, even though it's public data, your process is important and has value.
I see. Okay, I get it. Another question with respect to the flow analytics in 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 reading their response. It looks like they'll be working closely with our community outreach consultant as well. And I'm wondering, it it sounds like there there'll be incorporating some the 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 feedback that our community outreach consultant collects. I'm wondering, do they, and also they'll be intaking proposed maps from the public. Will they have any, do they have a translation capability? Like if if they receive maps that are in in languages other than English, will they be able to work with those maps?
That is a good question, and perhaps, Rich, I don't know if that was something that we had in one of our qualifying questions, or if we had multi-language support as one of the scoring criteria. I'm not, I have to attest, I'm not aware of that. I know that the mapping interfaces that they're talking about, if they're talking about public interface was presented in two forms in the RFP. One that could have been in a digital virtual format in which individuals be invited to something like the Zoom and also interact to work interactively with their web services. And then the other would be more of an in-person experience. Rich, do you have details in terms of language offerings that they may have?
You know what? I'm just trying to take a look into the proposal now. I don't recall off the top of my head. Give me a second.
That's a great question. We didn't anticipate that, but that's definitely something that's a significant concern as we move forward, that make sure that the information is widely available.
Yeah, I guess I'm curious also, are we asking the demographer for the online mapping tool? Will that be available in languages other than English? Or whether we, I mean, it's something maybe we want to think about.
It's in the reply, I'm sure. Or I mean, in the proposals.
I'm familiar with both offers and both software that they're using. I am not aware if there's specific language support to to these specific web endpoint tools.
Commissioner Serbin? Hi, this is Commissioner Katerina, if you don't mind. I know that since I've been working on the Outreach RFP ad hoc committee, in our RFP, as it relates to these issues, there are translation services included. And so we'll need to look at that to make sure that what gets communicated to the demographer is translated properly. But but anything coming from the Outreach RFP consultant should be translated for the demographer.
I think, Commissioner Serbin, I think your specific question, though, is whether like the web frame, the UI UX capability of the software as it's presented on the internet, does it have the ability to automatically have translations into into different languages available to the customer? And that that I don't think I can answer with the information presented.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. You exactly understand what I'm asking.
I understood what you're saying, yes.
And just as a point, that's something that we could, you know, kind of just clarify as part of contract finalization if concurrence is made today.
And then lastly, another question, or and I don't think this is, and maybe this isn't a question for you, Mr. Martin, and this is maybe a question that is more properly considered by the commission, which is recognizing what Commissioner Diaz mentioned with respect to the RPV analysis. I'm wondering whether we ought to consider as a commission retaining counsel to render a legal opinion on the sufficiency of that analysis as a as an independent task or, you know, another contract we want to award out, so.
Commissioner Serbin, I'll ask you to hold that for discussion. I think that unless there's there's a specific aspect, Ross, in in the RFP or SSC process.
The minority majority capability of creating districts was mentioned in both RFPs, or at least as in part the examples presented as part of the considerations, but not specifically called out as something that we scored independently, like one better than the other, but they it was mentioned.
But it's a it's a valid point to raise. So good. Thank you for that discussion. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
You're welcome.
So I've got Commissioner Russ, then co-Vice Chair Katerina, then Commissioner Larson. And again, I'll remind commissioners, we are still in asking questions, which is fine. And we can continue to ask questions during discussion. But I do want to keep aware of the time. Commissioner Russ.
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, on this, I can't raise my hand electronically, so you're gonna have to. I'm gonna have to do it this way. Thanks for recognizing me. Yeah, I can see where my confusion was the last time when I was talking about the the cost. On your rubric, you were saying that flowing out analytics was about $181,000, yet on there, page 47, they're they're totaling it at just under $200,000. It's 10% difference, not nickels and dimes, but we are fighting for nickels and dimes sometimes. And I was wondering, what was the, what is the value or what is the cost of the of the contract? Was it, is it the 181,000 or the 199,000?
I think I can speak to that. So it's 181,000. The the 200,000 number is because they added in an optional live scenario modeling task into that fixed price. So that remains as optional, you know, for the discretion of the commission to exercise. So the fixed price for the work proposed is 181,000.
I did, sorry.
I'd like to have a live demonstration of a buy. That would be something I'd be in favor of very much.
I actually watched a video of them doing this, and it's it's in, I'll call it charrette format, where you bring a group together and they allow to like kind of openly pontificate what-if scenarios so that you can see the outcomes with the software and its algorithm in the backend. And that seems to be the trend for the majority of the softwares that are in this industry, is to allow for that type of interactive speculation.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just clarify on that because I may have made an assumption I shouldn't have made. The option to pursue that, though, is something the commission can decide later. Ross and and Rich, that's not something that you need guidance from us on now for a contract negotiation. And I'm asking Rich primarily about that.
Yeah, that's correct. It was clear that it was an option. So when we execute this, it will be an option that could be elected, you know, post-award.
Good. Thank you all for making that out, particularly Commissioner Rush. All right, co-Vice Chair Katerina, and then Commissioner Larson.
Oh, I withdraw. Thank you.
No problem. Commissioner Larson.
Okay, let's go back to the language issue. I did read the proposal. And on page nine, Task Eight, second, third sentence, she talks about a video and written instructions in English, Spanish, and additional languages requested by the county. So I I would assume in that regard, they will help our pick the people who provide guidance to us. If they choose to provide it in other than English, the the flow analytics people will accommodate that.
You're correct that it specifically says one live training, technical training session, a specialized training video in multiple languages, and a dedicated technical support email address would be provided under Task Eight. So the presumption there is that they would have somebody translate the instructions on how to use the either the session, the software, or what's going on in the training.
Are you referring to the flow proposal?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that was slightly different from what Commissioner Serbin was asking about, which is whether there was multi-language support within the computer interface. It's close, but not quite the same thing.
But yeah, good to bring out. And again, just reinforces that priority. I think the commission as a group has for accessibility, including in languages. So thanks for bringing that out. Commissioner Pons.
Yes, great presentation. Thank you very much. My question goes to the issue of backward compatibility as far as the software is concerned, because when you think of maybe the last time the software used was 10 years ago, so that makes it really legacy software. And so what we use now should be backward compatible to make sure we understand what changes when we shifts, make shifts on the demographics. So what was then, what is now, and what is the difference going?
This is a, this is an excellent question because as as many of you know, 10 years in information technology sector is like dog years, you know, but it's it's a it's a lifetime in terms of the evolution of the technology. So what we're using today is dramatically different from what was available in 2010. What happens again in 2030 will again be remarkably different from what we do today. And specifically to your question, Commissioner Pons, the 2010 evolution of software that was being used for redistricting was largely based around using geographical information systems, software's algorithms to crunch and test the compactness of various areas and whether or not it's demographically sufficiently diverse. And the types of information that we would expect to to test through that wouldn't have been done on a table or in a tabular format. The data effectively, the PL 94171 data is essentially the same as it was back then as it is today, or at least it's expected to be delivered. But the interactions, what was happening in 2010 is that having an interactive experience where you can use software and test scenarios in the public in a web frame was almost brand new. I mean, very brand new at that time point. And wasn't really a factor in the redistricting or essentially the the decennial census of 2010. It is now, though. It's massively a significant factor, and the expectation for users in the commonplace, those that are using computers to be able to interact with information like we've seen perhaps through COVID, be able to interact and parse your own data and see what's happening in different counties or under different scenarios or different time ranges. That's the new expectation. But the baseline data is largely unchanged. So the interoperability of the information and the assumptions that go with what types of algorithms that we've used, the types of tests for fairness, those all carry forward. Some of them date back all the way to the 1980s in terms of the first time the mathematics were used. Does that answer your question?
It does. I was mostly concerned about, you know, backward compatibility, forward compatibility, and make sure that it was consistent. And then the graphic user interface for those like me that, you know, I don't, I don't, it's not like I don't care about the data behind the background, but it's the graph, the GUIs that I want to be, make sure that I can manipulate and get the information I need as a common when I'm looking at this, because, you know, I'm not going to be interested in a spreadsheet because it's going to be too complex. But I am interested in the GUI that the spreadsheet produces.
Right. So user friendliness, the the way it's presented, I can guarantee you with 100% certainty that what you see this time through will change the next time through, if if we're even involved, right? Whoever is in this position in the future, they will be interacting with it in a dramatically different manner. But the underlying premises and the context of how the data is being used and the idea of using demography and the four basic components of it, those are going to still be present. And yes, we could take 2010 data and run it through this contemporary process. Presumably, in the future, we could take 2020 data and run it through that process or advance it and and test it against ACS estimates if we wanted to. That would be in between.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great discussion. Appreciate it. Commissioner Inman, then Commissioner Serbin.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Pons jogged my my mind here a little bit to ask another question. I was wondering, in talking about compatibility, well, the issue is being able to compare 2010 with 2020. And so that's a data issue. And I I don't recall, but I assume that flow as well as Timmy and Spouse talked about being able to recast the 2010 data into 2020 geographies for comparison purposes. Is that part of these proposals as well?
I'd have to review the specifics for each, but I know that that is one of the most common things to test for fairness in terms of determining the outcomes. Like 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 lopsided outcomes of the reliability test, the XFC test, or any one of these mathematical tests where you could see, like, if we took contemporary data, sorry, if we took historical data and and cast it in a contemporary geography, would the outcome be radically different? Would it would the entire district flip from Republican to Democrat or, you know, skew highly one direction or another? And these are typically tests that they are required to do in order to ensure that it passed muster.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Serbin.
Hi, thank you. So my my question, again, I'm I'm a little, I'm still concerned, I guess, about the the RPV analysis. So is so my, am I understanding this correctly that the in award, in in recommending, in the SSC is recommending that the RFP be awarded to flow and that flow conduct an RPV analysis as part of the RFP? That's correct, right?
According to the tasks and deliverables, I believe that was one of the things that they can. According to the tasks and deliverables, I believe that was one of the things that they can do as tasks assigned.
Okay. And did, is, is that a thing that they've done before? We, do we know, I mean, do we have, is, so by, is the S S E then?
Under Task Three of the Flow's offering, they specifically call out racially polarized voting analysis and, uh, detailing out what they, what they can and will do under the scenario, including the breakdown of the individuals involved in their percentage, uh, F, level of effort.
Right, right. And, and I guess I, my question is, um, with the S S E recommending that the R F P be awarded to flow, is, 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 is that saying then that there's a level of confidence that flow can competently perform that task?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Thanks again to all for the really, really useful questions and Russ and Rich for bringing out all that information. Us David, at this point, do we have any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not have any requests in advance of the meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public testimony on this item, Chair Bame.
Very good. So to move from the excellent question-answer discussion we were having to an actual discussion, we will need a motion. Barbara, do we have the motion aside with this? Very good. Okay, so the motion I'll be initially calling for, and I'm doing this with due regard for the discussion we've had to this moment, would be what you see on the screen to concur that the S S E accurately applied the scoring criteria. If that motion to concur is considered and passes, county staff would then finalize the R F P, conduct the negotiations that we were just discussing and award the contract to Flow Analytics, subject to protest and successful negotiations. I do want to make a good faith pledge though, that we can shift from this motion to a motion to not concur with the S S E recommendation if our discussion moves in that direction. It just seems to me that at this point, this would be the right motion to take up. So with that in mind, do I have a motion along these lines, what you see on the screen, to concur with the S S E that the S S E accurately applied the scoring criteria? So, hey, Commissioner Larson moved. Commissioner Chen, you seconded?
Seconded.
Great. Okay, so, uh, discussion. I am not seeing any hands as I roll through the slide. Do we, is it okay if we take the slide down and I'll be able to host the discussion better that way? Commissioner Hanson? You're muted.
I would like to comment that I believe that Flow has the experience, even though it may not be with a county or San Diego County, but certainly all of their work with school districts can be much more complicated and much more hotly contested. And they seem to have been very successful in doing that. So I, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? I'm going to call one more time for comment and then move to a vote on the motion to concur. Very good. David, would you please call a role, uh, call the role for a vote? Thank you.
George, Chair Bame, just for the sake of the audio record, I'd like to state that the motion is to concur that the Source Selection Committee accurately applied the scoring criteria defined by the I R C for all proposals received in response to R F P one zero six seven three for redistricting demographic, demographer services and with the S S E notice of intent to award to Flow Analytics. With that, Commissioner Servin?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
My daughter gave me that, she asked that I, she was at a, that I use it at commission meetings, so I've, I've done that now. Uh, aye.
Commissioner Ponce?
Aye.
Chair Bame?
Aye.
Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman? Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Dostal?
Aye.
I believe Commissioner Krugliak is still absent. Chair Bame, that motion passes with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, and I will give due regard for a, a good, solid response to Commissioner Chen, but I need a little more time for that, so we'll, we'll get there. All right, very good. Um, thank you again very much, Commissioners, for the really, really thorough and transparent discussion. Staff will keep us all informed as the process moves forward. Uh, I will note that the I R C does indeed still have a separate R F P in process right now. And without objection, I'll ask Barbara to give us a brief out, uh, update on how things are going with the Public Outreach and Engagement Services R F P. Barbara.
Thank you Chairman Bame for the Public Outreach and Engagement Services R F P. Um, following the I R C special meeting on May fifth, the D P C, Department of Purchasing and Contract, posted the R F P basics. A pre-proposal conference was held on May eleventh. Information about attendees has been posted on BineNet. The R F P closed on June first and the S S E Selection Source Committee began meeting on June second. The goal is to have their final report for I R C consideration through a special meeting on June twenty-ninth. However, the S S E is still really working hard, uh, to try and complete in time for the June twenty-fourth I R C regular meeting. And that concludes my update, Chair Bame.
So just for everyone's calendar awareness, the goal is to have that, uh, S S E recommendation, uh, at our June twenty-fourth regular meeting. But if we're not ready, if they're not ready for that, the recommendation will be for a June twenty-ninth special meeting. Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
Excellent, all right. So please mark your calendars for June twenty-fourth, the regular meeting, our next meeting. And if for some reason the S S E isn't ready, we will be given a recommendation for a special meeting on the twenty-ninth. Thank you, Commissioners, and Barbara, thank you again. The next item for the I R C's consideration is Agenda Item Six entitled Discussion and Possible Approval of Demographic Services R F P and Public Outreach and Engagement Services R F P Ad-Hoc Committees' Recommendations, Defining the Role of the Single Point of Contact for Service Providers. This is a continuation of the discussion we had at our last meeting when the I R C authorized both R F P ad hoc committees respectively to work together with staff and I R C council to define the role of the I R C point of contact for contractors as we have been discussing. The ad hoc committees have detailed the role and responsibilities for our consideration today. I'll express gratitude in advance and a copy of that has been included with your agenda materials for today's meeting. I'll now turn to Commissioner Inman to tell us more. Commissioner?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Bame. And, uh, Mr. Bame indicated this is the combined work of two ad hocs. And, and so that's Commissioners Hanson, Diaz, Garcia, Larson, Katerina, and of course yours truly. Um, and, uh, also, uh, we work closely with staff and legal counsel to really work out the details of this position. Uh, to, uh, to summarize, um, it's essentially a, uh, a position that we're creating through the authority, to, uh, by authority from the I R C to represent us in working with contractors, uh, to be the point person, uh, between regular or special meetings of the I R C, so that the contractor has someone that they can look to, um, as they're, um, as they're working through their processes. Um, it's an oversight role to ensure that, uh, uh, the contractor is on time. Uh, the work products are complete, that performance is, um, as expected. It's a monitoring role. Um, it is also a role to help coordinate activities across the various entities. Uh, it's not just the I R C, but there's the County of San Diego, as well as representatives, uh, to monitor contracts that adheres, that adheres to the contract. So that is the role that we're defining here. Um, based on feedback that we got last time, uh, in the meeting, uh, what we needed to do is go back and put more information down as to the specific role and the details of exactly what it is, uh, that this, that, uh, that this role is going to do. Um, and then also to, uh, further define, um, the various relationships that are going on here, the interaction and the parties that are all engaged in, um, in actually accomplishing the overall task of redistricting and how that relates to, um, the I R C, the single point of contact, and in particular, um, uh, the contracting officers representative, uh, the C O R. So we've got lots of acronyms, so I'm sure David appreciates that. Um, uh, because we've got a SPAC, we've got a COR, and we've got a, uh, what are we? Are we an IRK? Uh, the I R C is an IRK. So, uh, so those are, those are all the bodies and, and the labels that we have. So if you could put up, uh, the, uh, do you have the, uh, uh, document that went out in the agenda materials? Can we show that, please? I didn't, uh, have a slideshow. I was just hoping that we could show, uh, the document from, uh, the agenda packet. Hope springs eternal, so let's, let's see.
If I say it, don't get irked about it.
Yeah. Very good, I like that, David. No flag of music, but.
Apologies, yes, if you can give us just a second to find that particular one, we, you threw us, you threw us off on that one.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, well, we'll bring it right up if you just give us a second, thank you.
Commissioner Chen is certainly ready with a musical interlude for our entertainment, if need, thank you, sir.
Um, so, so I can just, uh, kind of go on talking until we get the, uh, the verbiage up there. Um, the first and foremost, the I R C has, um, uh, uh, authority to define, um, as well as select, uh, contractors to provide the services that we need to accomplish our duty. So we have, uh, sole authority, uh, for defining, directing, coordinating, auditing. All of those things are the role of, uh, the IRK, the I R C. Uh, what we're doing here is identifying a role and associating certain authorities with that role to help us in the mission and to, uh, to, uh, to make provision of the services more seamless and to streamline it and make it more efficient. And so, um, go ahead and go back. Oh, yes, perfect. If you could just go down so that the bullets are showing, that would be useful, please. There, perfect. So here are the specific authorities that the I R C is assigning to, uh, its, uh, single point of contact. And, uh, the first is, you know, this is a role where we're going to be working with the contracting officers representative. Again, the COR is the person that's responsible for, uh, uh, ensuring compliance directly with the, the letter and the details of the contract for providing direct audits. Things like making sure if they say that these three people are working on it, well, in fact, they are working on it. Uh, to make sure that if they say that they've got staff in San Diego County, that there actually is in fact somebody in San Diego County, um, so on and so forth. So it's, it's monitoring the details of the contracted compliance with those details. Uh, the COR is also, uh, doing things to facilitate payments and verified billings. Um, all of those kinds of administrative tasks are assigned to the COR. And so obviously, this person, uh, the S P O C is going to have to work together with, uh, the COR in order to accomplish those tasks. Um, uh, the SPAC is clearly going to be a channel for communication and, uh, represent the I R C between regular, uh, special meetings, uh, uh, with the contractor concerning scheduling, performance, procedural matters. The, uh, SPAC is providing an oversight presence. So this person or individual needs to be engaged in a way where they can see what the contractor is doing, understand the quality of the work product that's being, um, uh, that, that's being completed, uh, monitor it for timeliness, uh, make sure it's actually in fact what the I R C mandated or asked the contractor to do and then report on those matters, um, as needed in I R C meetings. Uh, again, uh, work with support of county staff and COR in, in accomplishing their, uh, their duties. Uh, in no way does the SPAC take on any authority to, uh, direct, to define or to, uh, to, to, uh, to work with the contractor in specifically doing certain tasks or, or making choices about do A as opposed to B. It's purely a monitoring and oversight role. Only the I R C has the authority to tell the contractor what to do and, and which tasks to do. This, this is a role to verify that the contractor is actually, uh, performing the work and, and, and monitoring the progress, uh, to, uh, to completion for those, uh, for those, uh, tasks. Um, the other thing that we clearly wanted to state here, if you, uh, go down to the, uh, the next paragraph, the paragraph at the end of this page, is again, just recognizing the role of the COR in this whole process and, and, uh, the importance that that role is going to play. So as I said, there are multiple players here and we all need to work together in order to be successful. Uh, the duties and tasks provided by the COR are going to be, uh, very important to success. You know, if the, that we have to have monitoring of the contractor relative to the specific, uh, details in the contract. We have to have someone who can, uh, provide the administrative, uh, support that the contractor is going to need for interacting with county staff, um, so on and so forth. So that, that is a summary, um, of the details that we've ironed out here in terms of, uh, the, uh, the role of SPAC, the single point of contact. And another thing, uh, if I, uh, I don't know if I clarified this earlier on, but each contractor would have, um, or potentially have, uh, a, a, a single point of contact. Um, so the I R C may choose to establish this, the contractor. They don't have to, or, or we don't have to. Uh, but, uh, for many contracts that we award, I'm sure that it would be, uh, reasonable to assume that we would want to create this position um, as, uh, as a way to, uh, serve as our liaison with, uh, with the contractor. So if you go down to the last page here, I think we've actually got the motion then. And, uh, just go on down to the motion. And essentially, this is just what I talked about before. So the motion is to approve this position. And, uh, it, it's a position with specific, uh, uh, with duties authorized by the I R C, which, uh, are the bullets that are listed there. And so, uh, that is all I, um, all I have. If any, uh, if any of the other folks on the ad hoc committees want to, uh, clarify anything here or, um, add any details, that would be in order. Otherwise, uh, I refer back to you, Chair Bame.
Thank you. Um, before I offer any comments, let me just ask, uh, do members of either the, of the ad hocs that worked on this have anything they want to add to Commissioner Inman's presentation? Very good. So, um, thank you for that presentation, Commissioner. Thank you to all the Commissioners who worked on this. Yet another task that I know wasn't easy. And I very, very much appreciate how this has been framed, detailed and defined while still allowing the commission to make the decision on whether to move forward on this or not. I, I think this reflects some really good work by each and every commissioner, thinking about the issue, thinking about, uh, the implications and finding a good way forward. So let me first invite Commissioners to ask any clarifying questions they have about everything related to point of contact. Very good. Uh, then I'll turn to David. Are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda item?
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not have any requests to speak on this item in advance of today's meeting. If anybody would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bame.
Very good, thank you, David. So to discuss this item, we'll need a motion. Uh, I'll ask staff to bring up that motion one more time on the paper. Very good. Um, we will restrict our reading of it if, with the commission's approval. Very good. We will restrict our reading of it if with the commission's approval till a little later. But it's basically that first phrase that the IRC may establish a single point of contact for each service provider. Do we have a motion to take that action, to authorize the IRC to be able to establish a single point of service, a single point of contact?
I still move.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
Second.
Commissioner Diaz, second. Excellent. Thank you very much. We can take it down again. But we'll have it ready to come up again quickly. And let me invite commissioners to engage in discussion on the motion. Very good. We'll be moving to a vote in just a moment. While you finalize your thoughts, let me just add that, as you all heard in our last meeting, in anticipation of this item, I asked commissioners to individually email any interest in volunteering to service point of contact to Barbara Jimenez. We'll talk more about that status after the vote because we are indeed moving forward with one RFP, and I think we'll need to get that one in place, assuming that this motion is approved. So with that, David, let me ask you, if you don't mind, to read whatever portion of the motion is needed for the audio record and then call for the vote. David, you're muted, I'm afraid.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to establish a single point of contact for each service provider. The SPOC or Single Point of Contact will be an IRC commissioner appointed by the IRC chairperson to service the liaison between a contracted service provider, the IRC and the COSD staff facilitating communications between IRC meetings, coordination of activities and review of performance relative to contracted services. Specific duties authorized by the IRC for its SPOC include to work with the County of San Diego Contracting Officers Representative or CORE to provide orientation of onboarding of service provider, to provide a channel for communication at the IRC level between regular and special meetings concerning scheduling, performance, standards and other procedural matters, to provide an ongoing oversight presence for the IRC of service provider performance, including review service provider work product for completeness and quality relative to stated IRC directives and monitor timelines and progress relative to IRC schedule and timeline and report on such matters at regular and special meetings of the IRC as needed, to coordinate with County of San Diego staff and COR to validate service provider billing, performance and compliance, and to work with and support the COSD COR as appropriate.
So we'll go ahead and move to the vote. David?
Thank you, Chair B. Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Pons?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Inman?
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Krugliak is absent. Commissioner Russ?
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina?
Aye.
Commissioner Serbin?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Chair B?
Aye.
Commissioner Dastal?
Aye.
Chair B, that motion passes unanimously with all commissioners who are present voting aye.
Very good. Thank you, David. Thank you, commissioners. To close this item with the IRC's agreement and due regard, consideration and thanks for the willingness of commissioners who did volunteer to serve as chair, I'm happy to name Commissioner Ken Inman as the IRC demographic services contractor point of contact. Barbara will be in touch as we continue working on the selection of the point of contact for the outreach services contractor. Moving on. Item seven, an opportunity for the commission's remaining ad hoc committees to provide updates. In keeping with our usual procedures, we'll hear comments from the public after presentations and then hear from commissioners with clarifying questions or comments on the presentations. I'd ask commissioners to keep questions or comments brief, reminding you all that there's no action to be taken on these items. Nonetheless, the work is important, and I think we all remain very interested in hearing the updates. The first of which will be from the Ad Hoc Committee on Redistricting Outreach and Communication, which was originally created to develop recommendations on an outreach and communication plan prior to the onboarding of a public outreach and engagement contractor and before census data is available, including certain specifics tasks and a recommended timeline for this update, including an update on the ongoing education tour. And my thanks to the commissioners who've been participating or planning to participate. I'll turn now to co vice chair, Rosette Garcia. Rosette, please.
Thank you, Chair B. And as as you just heard, we've launched our education tours and sometime in the very near future, we should have a consultant on board, and so we'll be able to stand down finally. But as you'll see here on the first slide, this is what the staff have been doing to support our educational tour. You can see all the different places where they posted announcements about the educational tour. And you'll see how many people were reached in in those efforts. So really, I I think a really outstanding effort and many thanks to staff for that. I think we can go on to the next slide. Yep. So a little bit more about what some of that outreach has looked like. We actually got an article in the Union Tribune this week, and you'll see that the headline there at the top. But some other examples of advertising that has been done. And I think we can move on to the next slide. Yep. So you'll see here that District Five, that event has been completed. That was Commissioner Brown, Stephanie and I, who did that event. It was actually, I I thought it went really well. We had a very engaged audience. Very few people, if any, dropped off during our presentation, and we had some, you know, animated questions. District Four did their event, I want to say, earlier this week, and I think it also went really well. And you can see the list of the upcoming events. Just a quick word about, and I want to also say that there was another Commissioner Serbin presented to the Escondido Chamber of Commerce this week as well. And and maybe there are going to be a couple of other similar events that educational events that are not part of the tour. And and maybe we'll get requests for more just as a result of of the events that we're now doing. Just a few quick comments, kind of some quick lessons learned for those of you who have yet to present. And that is that staff has really been an incredible resource. When Stephanie and I rehearsed with them, they, you know, helped us with our screen saver, the backgrounds, and helping us figure out how how far or how close to be to the screen so that our faces could be seen, help with putting our script up on our laptop so that we could be looking up, reading our script as opposed to looking down and the audience seeing the top of our heads. So I encourage you to lean on staff and let them help you in the way that they can. And and for those events that are not these, part of these educational tours, I I think that what we're learning is that it's really important that staff attend these events with whoever's presenting as a panelist so that staff are there to support you, running, doing all the technical aspects, doing the slides, putting all that up, and then also helping to field questions. Because, for example, in our presentation, somebody asked about political party affiliation of commissioners and how long we had to be a member of a party. Like, was there any, were there any restrictions or guidelines about how long you had to be a member of a party in order, you know, to be considered affiliated with that party? And I remembered vaguely what, that there was some, that there was some timeline around that, but I punted very quickly to Barbara, and she had, you know, the legislation right there in front of her, and she could read the answer, which turns out is five years. And I said something like, I think it's at least two election cycles. It's five, it's it's a number of years. You can't just have been that for one year. But Barbara, can you please, you have that specific information? And of course, she was able to do that. So just a couple of things, lessons that we've learned so far. And the other, only other thing is just to be sure that you consider any any kind of failure that might happen so that you have a backup, you know, a backup script, even if you're using it online, that you have one printed out. If you're presenting alone, that maybe you have someone else who can fill in for you if something should go, you know, you should be unable to attend or something like that. But other than that, I think I think they're going well. I don't know if those of you who have already presented, that would have been and Stephanie, we had a good time, actually, I thought, presenting. And but that would have been Sonia, Arv and Barbara Hanson, I think, presented for D four. Those were the other two. If you all have any other comments that you want to make, that'd be great. But other than that, I think I'll hand it back to you, Chair B.
Commissioner Diaz, do you mind waiting? And let me invite members of the public first. But thank you, co vice chair Garcia and our fellow ad hoc committee members. Let me ask David, just at this moment, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda, on this report?
Thank you, Chair B. No request in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair B.
Very good. So we'll move to clarifying and additional comments and questions, starting with Commissioner Diaz. Please, thanks for your patience.
Yes, thank you. This was the first presentation that I've done for the IRC on this past Tuesday, and it went really well. And I just wanted to say that those RSVPs spiked as soon as there was that last push email. So if we could get like a last push email, the counties list serve was very effective to get those additional RSVPs. So I really appreciated that. And of course, I look forward to the next presentation.
Thank you for that. Other comments, questions? Very good. I am sure Commissioner Chen is ready to serve this opening act for any of the open, any of the sessions that are upcoming. So please feel free to call in. And again, in all seriousness, let me reiterate Rosette's comments. I really appreciate the work of my fellow AHC members, but by that I mean, because I'm tied up with a number of other things. Co vice chair Garcia, co vice chair Katerina, Commissioner Serbin, really outstanding work again to get us to this point. I want to echo both co vice chair Garcia and Commissioner Diaz in thanking staff for managing what is an amazingly complex effort still. Even with all this time where we've learned to operate at distance and over video conferences, it's still hard. And I know it's still a challenge for public participation and engagement. I hope it will get better as we move to in-person options. But I also think it provides a great means of outreach. So thanks again to staff for helping us move forward on that and keep that going. Very well. So moving on. Unless there are any other questions or comments about any aspect of the outreach and community engagement efforts. Good. We'll move on to the next update, which will be from the Legislative Ad Hoc Committee. You'll remember that committee was formed with four particular purposes in mind, all related to the timeline for redistricting. I won't review them here today, except to say that one of them is to report back to the full commission with recommended options for action, including but not limited to actions regarding State Senate Bill 594. I will note that the Ad Hoc Committee has helped the entire IRC complete a number of efforts in this regard, including the IRC resolution in support of SB 594 that was transmitted with a cover letter to Sacramento at the end of April. On May 13th, the IRC authorized the Ad Hoc Committee to develop language for suggested amendments to SB 594. And on May 23rd, I drew on the early resolution at the request and recommendation of the Ad Hoc Committee to send a message to members of the California State Citizens Redistricting Commission so that they could be provided with our resolution and some thinking about the amendments and related issues that have been discussed. So a lot of legislative engagement going on. For the very latest on that, let me turn to Jack Russ from the Ad Hoc Committee for an update on what has occurred since our last meeting. Commissioner Russ?
Well, thanks for not stealing my thunder this time, David. But I have some thunder and lightning, actually, to report to you, I'm afraid. First of all, let me ask you a question, Chair. Did you sign that letter out this morning? I I don't know what the status is.
I'm happy to discuss it. There's a little bit of a technical issue with the latest action that I'm sure you've described. We will get it out either today or tomorrow to all concerned addresses. I don't want to steal any more thunder than that. Please go ahead.
Actually, I'm glad you didn't sign it yet. You're right. There's a little bit of work. And part of it is because things are very fluid, particularly the last couple of days. It has become very fluid in that, you know, we've been, we've been in contact with state legislators. This has been kind of difficult. I think we've contacted about half of them, or more than half, actually. And we've talked to their staff, the chief of, chief of staffs. But what has happened in the last couple of days is that Senate Bill 594 has become what's called a two-year bill, even though it's a, it's been tagged as an urgent bill. Two years, we only need it for the next, for less than a year. And so this, it's been kind of confusing as to why, why it's been labeled as a two-year bill. But it seems to have lost its urgency because what what has happened is that the 594 has been shelved. Apparently, there is a workload limit of 12 bills from the Senate to the Assembly, and Senator Glazer has decided not to move the bill. So this was the vehicle that we were, that we were going to hitch a ride on to to get some relief of 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 the compressed timeline. And as as Commissioner Garcia knows, it seems like our vehicle has a flat tire now. So there are other ways that that we may want to go ahead. I spoke with Assembly member Christopher Ward, chief of staff, and she was saying that the speaker of the assembly was was aware of the timeline problem and might actually be looking at a remedy to the state election code. That could be, that could be another way to go. But there certainly has not been a coalition to push for the, for a time extension. Yet when we talk around the state, we get people, we get the LA CRC, the California CRC, we get registered voters, we get a lot of people saying, yo, yo, we need to have something really proffered to get this, to get this extension, but nobody has done that yet. And that's what we're trying, trying to do and trying to get people on board to to endorse it and to support it. In fact, some of our legislators have reported back to some of my colleagues on the committee, send us that letter, send us that information, let us see what it, what it is that you're saying. So as soon as we get it out, Chair B, I I think that might be a good, a good thing to do. The other thing that was suggested was that the letter that we still should probably still send a letter to Senator Glazer to, even though he has decided not to move the bill at this time, who knows, it may be enough of a push. But the other other thing is that we could simply change the address, the addresse and send it to the Speaker of the Assembly and the President Pro Tem of the of the Senate. Now, some of our colleagues on the committee have already talked into the President Pro Tem, Tony Atkins. So I'm sure she's probably, she's already aware of it, but I think it would be a good thing for us to push the two. Go ahead and publish the letter, send the letter to Senator, Senator Glazer. Other stakeholders such as the legal women voters, the common cause for sure will endorse it. Probably Los Angeles CRC will give some endorsement. Now, the only thing that we're looking at is to extend the deadline, the timeline, just to January 15. I think, I think, I think that covers it. My other colleagues, do you have any, anything to add, anything to add to that? So 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 Chair B, we want to. So, so Chair Baim, we want to encourage you to sign the letter, send it out, and then let's change the addresseses and send it to the Speaker and the, the President Pro Tem. And, and we'll let all the other stakeholders know what's out there, if they want to see a copy of it, and hopefully they'll put their stamp of endorsement on it.
Appreciate that. I really want to call on Co-Vice Chair Garcia, not least to clarify whether she is grinning or gritting her teeth or both when she's reacting to some of this. I'm gritting my teeth, but that's okay. As well as Commissioner Diaz. I think, Commissioner Russ, you said that by far the most important thing you said was that the situation is fluid. I couldn't agree more. So I do want to call on both of them. By introducing this part, though, the presentation and discussion, I do want to recall that I very much appreciate, and I think the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee appreciates the willingness of the commission as a whole to let myself and the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee make some choices on the best way to transmit the material. You've all seen the text of the resolution and the previous letters that we've sent. I think all that is in keeping with the will of the commission, and while still within the bounds of the chair's authority, I very much want to make sure we're still acting on behalf of the full commission, the full commission is comfortable with where things stand. So with the commission's approval, I'm going to invite Co-Vice Chair Garcia, Commissioner Diaz, and Commissioner Inman, you're on that Ad-Hoc Committee too, correct? So I'll invite all three of you to make some comments, then I'll ask for public comment, and then I'll ask for commissioners to ask clarifying questions and comments, starting with Commissioner Serbin. So I know, Commissioner Diaz, you had your hand up. We'll start with you, and then the other two members, please. I think you're muted.
I'll defer first to Commissioner Garcia.
Great.
Thank you. I just always get a chuckle out of Jack, and the, the image of us, we've been referring to 594 as the vehicle that is going to provide us some relief. And so Jack said to me earlier today, and it looks like it got a flat tire. So I just think that's funny. So, but I think he covered all the information very well. We were thrown for a loop a couple of days ago when we heard that the bill was stalled. It's, we've gotten two or three different reasons for why it has stalled. One other thing that we heard was that the CCRCC, the statewide commission, has been radio silent on their timeline and on their ask for a deadline extension. And, and because no one else has actually stepped forward with an ask, I think that there was some, you know, lack of momentum that was detected. Of course, we've been working on this amendment and a letter that we were, you know, just on the verge of sending on the day that we heard of this development. So it kind of, you know, disrupted our activity, and as we struggled to get a lot of, you know, try to figure out what's going on, Ken, Commissioner Inman, met the following morning with two representatives, and both those representatives were very interested, and I, maybe I should let you, I don't want to steal your thunder, Ken, but actually, it seemed to be something we do at this ERK. They were very eager to actually see the language and get their hands on our amendment. So I think it really is incumbent upon us. I think maybe had we moved a little bit quicker, it's the total speculation, but if we had moved quicker, other agencies, other organizations might have signed on, might have, you know, right, one of the things I heard yesterday was that there have been, you know, there have been no coalitions kind of rising up and asking for a specific, any specific action. So we're hoping maybe that will be the spark that lights the fire, maybe tomorrow.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Diaz?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, and I do apologize, because things happen so quickly in the last 48 hours, and I wasn't able to forward one of the communications I got directly from the bill's author, saying that he remains committed and involved, and they're asking to see our amendments. So they're still keeping track of everything related to local redistricting, and any potential fixes would be helpful. So that was their statement as of last, last, yesterday afternoon. And I can forward that as part of experte block, just to get a chance to, sorry.
Commissioner Inman, did you want to add to that part of the conversation? Very good. So in a moment, excuse me, because I'm seeing multiple messages about a request to speak. Okay. Let me ask first, David, I understand we have a request to speak on a non-agenda item, but before we consider that, let me ask you if there are any requests to speak on this particular Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee report or update.
Thank you, Chair Baim. We did not receive any request to speak on this item in advance of the meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the Raise Hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Baim.
Okay, before we continue, with the commission's indulgence, I'll ask and hope there's no objection to allowing a member of the public to speak on a non-agenda item. I know this is a little unusual, but for the sake of public engagement, I'd like to at least give them our standard time period, not seeing any objection. David, can you call on that person? Do you have the electrons to do it?
We had a request to speak on a non-agenda public communication from Michael Aguirre, but I do not see a name matching that in the queue. So if that person is going by another name or would like to address the board at this time, we would like to give you the opportunity. You're welcome to raise a virtual hand by pressing the Raise Hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in. And Chair Baim, I'm not seeing any requests to speak.
All right, very good. I hope he'll be willing to speak at our next meeting. Very well, then, we'll start with, we'll have some questions and comments on this. So I'll add what I know in a moment, but let me start with Commissioner Serbin, because I know he had his hand up. Please.
Thank you for recognizing me again, Chair Baim. And thank you to Commissioner Russ for the excellent presentation, as well as to Commissioners Garcia, Inman, and Diaz for all their work on, on this critical issue. I, I'm, I'd like to sort of understand, if we're able to obtain a legislative extension of time, what, what would we, what would it allow us to do? I guess, I'd like to, I mean, what is it that we would do with that extra time? I know, of course, like this, this process is very compact as it is. So, you know, if we were able to get, you know, an extra two weeks or four weeks, where would we put that in our process? And we don't have to answer that right now with like any definitive, you know, answer. I just wanted to, I'm kind of trying to understand what, why this is such an important thing for us to get.
No, I, I think it's a valid point, and it's frankly one I'd like us to have to bring up in front of the public. Commissioner Inman, please.
Yeah, so one of the reasons we're looking for the extension is because right now, final maps are due December 15th, which is right in the middle of the holiday period. And so we're very concerned about being able to get sufficient focus from the public on this very important issue. We're coming out of COVID, we're all excited to go and hug and kiss and see our families and friends and significant others. And so that is one of the issues here, is it's not just giving us more time, it's getting us into a time period where the public can really focus in on the issue of redistricting to give, to give it the mind share it needs. Plus, it is to buy back some time that we've lost because of the delayed release of data. So there was a period of time initially allotted to this process. You know, we don't have that full period, full measure of time now. So it's twofold, one, to give us time, and to give us sufficient time to do the job, as well as move us out of that holiday period and get us into a period where we can really get, get the public to focus in. Thank you.
Am I right? That's partly also with regard to the, where we will be in the sequence at that point with regard to public input and public comment?
Correct. Yes, yes, for sure. That will be into the period where we're going back and forth with draft maps, maps being submitted, and we just want to make sure we have sufficient time for review of any maps that we put out, as well as deliberations on our side of maps submitted.
Good. Commissioner Pons?
Yes, great work by the committee. My question is, is the language in the letter strong enough now? Because I know we have an ask, and we're making recommendations, but in my opinion, based on the impact of the timelines, this should be more of a petition for them to move forward and do the things we're proposing. So now that we haven't sent the letter out, I'm going to ask Commissioner Russ, do you think the language is strong enough and sufficient enough to move the powers that be to making decisions and not holding it up in deliberation?
I'm looking, I'm trying to find a letter here in my files, so that I, I think it got stronger. It got, it got a lot stronger. And let me see if I can find it real quickly here. Chair, you don't by any chance have it in front of you, do you? It was, it was the last paragraph, not very strong.
You don't have to bring it up, and I'm going to trust your judgment.
No, that's a good question, Commissioner.
Yes.
And no, it got, it got stronger.
In effect, Commissioner Pons, the, the current draft of the letter, which may go through another change or two, had stated what the issue was, and in particular, our interest in making sure we restore as much of the time originally envisioned before the delay in the census data came up, particularly for public engagement and public comment in the new timeline. That, that was the overall goal. The current version of the letter has something akin to, we in San Diego County now have a way forward based on a suggested amendment. That amendment would, in effect, do what we've talked about in the resolution and other communications, to establish a new due date of January 15th. If you, if you add up all the timelines per what Commissioner Inman and the Ad-Hoc presented at our last meeting, I think it was, you'll see that, that actually restores a good bit of the time needed. The challenge frankly is, from my perspective, how do you cope? Well, it's a couple of different challenges. How do you cope with this fluid situation? Because while we want to be firm and clear, we also want to move towards a solution, and that involves making sure we understand where different key players, such as Senator Glazer, as Commissioner Diaz was just mentioning, where they stand and what they're willing to do. The other thing I'll say, though, and something I personally can vouch for the Ad-Hoc Committee's engagement and strongly, strongly recommend to the commission, letters take you to a point, and proposed amendments take you to a point. But in this environment, in my experience, the key factor is actually talking to representatives, senators, and their staffs. And my hat is off to the members of this Ad-Hoc Committee for continuing that engagement well within the authorities they've been granted, not making any decisions or making any new points, but reaching out. It has, for example, been somewhat surprising to me, that as fluid as this situation is, and I'll look to the Ad-Hoc Committees to check me on this and make sure I'm right, but the number of elected officials who did not know the current status until members of our IRC talked to them, by itself, that's a matter that is somewhat disturbing, but needs to be addressed in a, in a specific way. And this is where I think we're all also grateful for the tremendous advice we're getting from council, for the tremendous advice we're getting from staff, including staff who do not attend each and every IRC meeting, like Caroline Smith, but have been engaged with us. But I don't want to mislead you or anyone else. This is a complicated project, and I think as long as the goal remains clear, that what we want to do is restore as much of the original timeline as possible, even after the delay in census data, we'll get there. I'll add just one or two more notes, and then again, I want to make sure the Ad-Hoc Committee agrees. One of the reasons the letter has been delayed for a day or so is that we only just realized January 15th, the target date that we're extending to is a Saturday. And so we wanted to make sure we understood, should we say January 15th should be the deadline, or the next workday, January 17th would be the deadline? I think we're going to say the 15th. That's the kind of legislative tactical detail that I assume the commission is happy to defer to the Ad-Hoc's advice on, but I wanted to let you know that's the kind of issue and thoroughness of detail that I think is important, because it adds to the credibility. The other piece of this, though, as I said, is making sure all relevant elected officials, including from this region, but also from other places who are playing key roles, are informed that we're continuing to have exchanges and share information with groups like Common Cause and the League of Women Voters, and frankly, any other group that would be interested. I'm sure we'd be happy to hear from them, and they're welcome to reach us through the usual channels. I think, and Commissioner Russ, let me make sure, when you said the Los Angeles Redistricting Commission, that's the County Redistricting Commission in Los Angeles, correct? Yeah. As well as other redistricting commissions. And we may very well have as a next step, I think, reaching out to look for a more proactive contribution or endorsement from other redistricting commissions. We'll, we'll need to consider that. But this is all happening in an amazingly fluid environment, from what I can see. So it's exactly the right question, Commissioner Pons. We want to get the tone and the substance exactly right. And I'm very, the, the one thing I'm extremely confident on is that this will not be the last discussion or action we have on this. So I'll continue to look to the Ad-Hoc Committee, as well as others, for recommendations, including whether we need to come back for a full discussion and updated guidance from the commission as a whole. Again, I want to make sure the commission's comfortable with that. Let me turn briefly then to the other, to the members of the Ad-Hoc Committee for anything I missed or misstated or wasn't clear about.
No, that's very, very good, Chair. And Commissioner Pons' question, very good question, too. We have, it wasn't the exact, it was the third paragraph that was added. We have words like, "we were distressed," or "we, we urge, we urge you to remain engaged," things like this. Now, it was, it was much stronger. And, and then the chair ends it, "I, I reiterate, it's a critical mission, we urge you to remain engaged, ready to advance." So it's, this year as urgency legislation, two-year, a two-year legislation is not urgency. You know, it's going to be too late. And then, and then the chair signs it, "your friend and mine," or something like that.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. I don't know if I missed it, but can I get a copy of that latest version? So I can just...
I suppose.
That's great.
As soon as the chair signed it, I suppose.
We can see the draft topic, I think. We can be trusted.
Everyone's inbox with any number of versions of it. I, I think we're very close to closure on it. And again, I'll ask commissioners, and I'm sure we'll post it as well publicly, but I'll ask commissioners, please review it. And if at our next meeting, when you hear another update, you want to discuss in further detail or have ideas, Commissioner Pons, along the very lines you described, I'm very grateful for you bringing that up, because I think it'll be important.
And there are others, they, they want to see it. They, they've asked us to send it to us. Let us see what it is. They have asked that.
Well, thank you. I think the end date of the 15th of January is very fortuitous, for lots of reasons, as we all know. It's a national holiday for a reason, it's reflective of what we are doing in the first place. So thank you.
Excellent point.
Good point.
Other clarifying questions or comments? Commissioner Larson, please.
I think this is a really interesting discussion, and I really appreciate what you guys have been doing, just to share some experience that I've had in dealing with many, many elected officials. You've got to really make it personal. The personal thing is the primaries. Talk about how this is going to mess up the primaries. That's something that'll get their attention. That's something that'll get their attention. That's the only date that really counts in their real life. That's it.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any other final questions or comments before we move on? Very good. Well, thank you again to members of the ad hoc for your continuing engagement. Just to build on what Commissioner Larson said, I, I know you all are talking to people you know, people you don't know, people you're not sure are the right people to talk to. And everything I see from feedback is remarkably effective. And Commissioner Diaz, I will reassure you, please don't feel guilty about timeliness. We're all doing the best we can. And I, I really do think it's, it's good that we're seeing that engagement on top of all the other things all commissioners are doing. Not just outside of this commission, but all you're doing within the commission. It's all, it's all very much appreciated. So thank you for that. All right. With that, I think we are, we have final, finished with our ad hoc committee updates. Barbara, that's correct? Very good. So we'll move on to future agenda items. Agenda item eight on your agenda for today. Again, this is an informational item with no action proposed for the commission today. Commission inputs on future agenda items are of course always welcome. And I can assure you, we'll do all we can to address those concerns effectively and efficiently at an upcoming meeting. Before I open up the floor for comments and ideas, let me ask Barbara Jimenez for an update, including on how we're, how things are looking for moving to in-person meetings down the road. Barbara?
Thank you, Chair Baiman. And something our public health officer mentioned yesterday was things are moving, are very fluid. So anything I tell you today may be subject to change and David may even have additional information, he can chime in. But in-person attendance at the Board of Supervisors meeting has remained limited. So we're doing a hybrid model. It's limited to 22 people at a time inside the actual chamber due to COVID-19 physical distancing guidelines. So we're still encouraging the public as much as possible to call in, tell it, you know, via the Zoom and/or ecomments. And then while we're anticipating the reopening of the California economy on, on June 15th, we are hearing from the governor's office, or we did hear from the governor's office that his executive order, which provides flexibility to hold the virtual public meetings will not necessarily end on June 15th. So that means that we would most likely continue to hold the virtual meetings until further, further issue or a new order is issued by the governor's office. We're hoping to get that advanced notification so that we can provide not only this commission, but you know, state and local commissions and agencies and boards times to adjust as necessary and we'll continue to keep the IRC updated. As many of you probably heard, there's, there was some, we received a new updated order yesterday from the California Department of Public Health relating facial mask and mask in the workplace. Caloja had their meeting yesterday. We anticipate some additional information for the workplace as well. And David, I don't know if you have anything else, but that's the latest that I know. David Hall. I caught him off guard.
I'm sorry. Yeah. The last information I had was that it was the intent of the board to fully reopen board meetings on June 15th, eliminating any COVID protocols subject to any state or local health regulations that were in place at that time. I can also say that it is the chair's intent that a virtual participation option would be a permanent feature of Board of Supervisors meetings. So that is not going to go away. That's the information I know.
Very good. Thank you both for that. And therefore we'll, we'll certainly hear a further update at our next meeting. And I think commissioners, I'll ask you to remain prepared for the in-person meetings. I think we all look forward to and want. All right. Before we hear from commissioners though, I'll ask David, is there any requests from the public to speak on this specific item?
Thank you, Chair Baiman. We did not receive any requests in advance of the meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission, please raise a virtual hand at this time. Not seeing any requests to speak. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Baiman.
Okay. I've got a number of updates available, but as always, I'm more interested in what commissioners have to say than what I have to say. So Commissioner Serbin, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
I'll defer to Commissioner Garcia. She'd like to go first.
Thank you. Quick question. When we go back, I'm going to say when, not if, when we go back to in-person meetings or when we actually start in-person meetings, do we know where we might be meeting? Will we be meeting only at one location for our regular meetings or might we move to different locations around the county?
Chair Baiman, I, of course, whatever the direction of the IRC is in terms of whether we stay in one place or move. What I can offer is that we have a number of county facilities in the, across the entire county, north to south and east and everywhere in between. And we are happy on the staff side to help to start looking into those facilities, making sure that there's, you know, the room's large enough. Our facilities are usually by public transportation. And so that makes it easier for, for public also to attend. Most of our family, if not all our family resource centers in all the regions of the county are by public transportation, easily accessible off of the freeway, plenty of parking. And then it's just a matter of coordinating the, if we want to move around or not. And then I also know that the clerk of the board has great connections with the different cities as well. So if one of the county facilities doesn't work, then once they're open, we could definitely look into also accessing a city facilities in addition, especially for those public hearings. But I'll defer to all of you whether or not, what, how that works, but we're, we're happy to support.
So do I understand then that the actual location of in-person meetings is at the prerogative, the location would be at the prerogative of the IRC? I, somehow I thought that might, we might be told where we would be meeting.
I, let me see, I think.
I think when we. Answer that now, but I was just curious.
But I think when we do the public, I know when we do the public hearings, the intent is to make sure that we are in all of the different districts. So for certain that will happen with those. I think as a matter of your meetings and how you want to structure that, initially, the address that's being used for the IRC is the County Administration Center. But the public hearings could rotate or should rotate, but I don't think that that limits you to having your meetings, your regular meetings at any of the locations as well.
Co-Vice Chair Garcia, we hadn't talked about this, so I'll, I'll just add the footnote. My intent had been that when we have our first in-person meeting or two, to ask staff to prepare some options for our regular meetings to be held in different locations. I'm sure the usual rules will apply, including accessibility and ADA kind of requirements. But I, I very much agree, and I would imagine most commissioners agree that the more we can do in different places and the more accessible that makes our regular meetings, the better. So we'll have, I'm sure, some flexibility on that. I should add that I have two rising fifth graders who have invited us to their elementary school on a Thursday because they're tired of me being tied up at home in a room and closing the door for a few hours. So do plan on that if you like, but the questions will be very, very difficult. Be aware of that as well. Commissioner Serbin.
Yes, thank you, Chair Baiman. I'm not sure if this is a question for Barbara. I guess this is more so a question for us as maybe a potential future agenda item. I'm wondering whether we ought to start discussing whether the IRC wants to begin having a presence at upcoming summer community events. There's a number of them that are coming up. I mean, it's June 10th today, June, Juneteenth event is coming up in, on Imperial Avenue. I, I think, you know, events like that where we, where we would have a presence in traditionally in, in, in communities that traditionally don't participate in, in these processes, I think are very important. I think we need to start thinking about that.
Yeah, I very much agree. I think part of the, the issue frankly has been going beyond the material and the educational tour. We've got that fluidity going on with some of our timelines. But I also think you're right, time's passing and there's still a lot of education to be done. I'd encourage all commissioners, if you have ideas along that line, we can fold that under, at least for a little while longer, the ad hoc committee if we need to, which is a standing agenda item for those updates. But there's also a process whereby we can simply pursue those kind of events. If we need a discussion of that as a full agenda item, I'd be happy to consider that in one of our next two meetings, let's say. So Barbara, let's please take note of that and make sure we're addressing it. But thank you for that. Other comments? Okay, let me just offer a few updates. Even today, I've heard questions about mapping tools and in particular, whether we can have a mapping tool, you'll recall from previous discussions, and/or a community of interest tool on the IRC website. I'll note that an online mapping tool was included as part of the RFP for demographic services. So we should be seeing more on that very soon. The IRC and the staff will continue working with the contractor on this, I'm sure, with consideration of the possibilities for capturing COI information and more information to come. Perhaps as one of the early responsibilities of our new point of contact. Everyone see that Commissioner Inman's got the same Garcia model of, of gritting or gritting. We can't tell which, but that's probably both. That's fine. I'll continue in a moment, but let me ask Commissioner Hanson first.
I just had a comment that from, from reading those two proposals, the term California Fair Maps Act was discussed, and that is not something we've ever really talked about. So I was going to offer to find some background materials on that that could be added to our website so that we could all come up, be coming up to speed on that piece of legislation, which I had not heard of before.
Thank you very much for that contribution and that offer. I'll take you up on that with my existing authority and again, a good reminder, there's still a lot of good material to be utilizing on that training continuum. But Commissioner Hanson, thank you for that.
Barbara, can I send it to you and then you can get it up on the.
We'll make sure everyone's alerted when it's received. We have a continuing task on bylaws that I want to offer a quick update on. Co-Vice Chairs Katerina and Garcia have been doing some great initial work on this. There, we kind of had an assumption in our chair, co-vice chair duties that maybe we don't want to form yet another ad hoc committee, especially because we're having to talk about these bylaws as we go for some things anyway. So please plan on that being a topic at an upcoming meeting. The intent will be the kind of intent I've expressed to you before. We'll try to have a package of some sort for your consideration, an initial discussion, but not a vote at that first session. We'll have the initial discussion, let everyone have it for at least two weeks and then have a vote. But I want to talk more with co-vice chairs Katerina and Garcia on the best way to present that and not make it an overwhelming amount of information as we go. Let me ask the co-vice chairs, did you want to comment on that at all? Okay. Regarding Voting Rights Act training, Barbara has sent commissioners information on the existing training resources, again, on the training continuum. We still have this as a topic that we want to discuss, but again, as Commissioner Serbin said, we don't want to just wait for things. There are resources out there to talk about. There are headlines to read and articles to read about this. So please do stay abreast of that. I am very keenly aware and I regret Commissioner Kowalak's absence, but I know she would remind us, we still need to have training on translation requirements as required by law. That may well come from council. There are some other resources available, but do plan on that coming. And, and Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please.
Please go ahead and finish. I, I just was raising my hand now, but I'll, I'll wait until you're done.
Great. No, I just had one more, that several commissioners have remained interested and said in their, stated their interest in previous meetings to capture lessons learned and to keep working on that with consideration for future IRCs. We had some of that discussion today with Russ. Whether we individually share those thoughts for compilation or we use some other method, method to do so, there's an important aspect of our work to keep in mind. We may want to consider, and we'll probably have a discussion about this in an upcoming meeting, whether there might be a fillable form template where it'd be very easy for you to go on the website, pull up the form, write some quick thoughts down and we can collect them in an automated basis that way as part of our database. But do start thinking about that. And I do think sometime before census data is released, I'd like to make sure we have a more fulsome discussion on that. Again, as always, we can have that discussion earlier or later as you may see fit. That's my shopping list at the moment. Let me turn to Co-Vice Chair Garcia and then Commissioner Pons.
So I just kind of wanted to go back to Ramesses', or Commissioner Serbin's comment about events that are starting to happen over the summer. And I'm wondering, because he mentioned Juneteenth, which is coming up, and if we, if the response is that we're going to come back to this at some later meeting, then we're not going to be able to respond to that event and who knows how many other events. And I'm wondering if there's a, if, if there's something in our bylaws that would preclude a commissioner or a couple of commissioners from suggesting that they attend an event as commissioners and, and ask Chair Baiman for you to authorize them to go as spokespeople for the IRC. I'm just feeling like, I'm wondering if we can fast track a little bit.
No, we will, we will use that no objection clause that I've used a couple of times since we were in a meeting and we've certainly had the interest, and I think it would make sense to everyone. Would there be any objection to asking staff to look into the possibility of engaging in some way on Juneteenth? And with regard to that, I certainly think I have it within my authority to authorize a commissioner or two to participate in that kind of event. Let me turn to Barbara and counsel or the other order, whichever works best for Hillary and Barbara.
I'm reading the bylaws, but I'll defer to Hillary first. It looks like council might be ready to go.
Chair Baiman, I just, unfortunately, this is an agenda is for discussion at this meeting in terms of, you know, we're, we're in the section talking about future agenda items and we don't have on the agenda today to discuss the IRC's participation in other types of events. So due to the Brown Act, we, that needs to be tabled for a future meeting.
Right. Although I, I want to be clear on that is within our power to talk within an informational discussion that if there's something we can authorize in terms of public contact under existing bylaws, we're allowed to mention that for the benefit of the public with the idea that it would be, I, I suppose I would put it under the authorizations for the ad hoc engagement committee. Now, whether we would need a special meeting to authorize that or not, I'm not sure. In any case, the point's well taken. Let's table it for now. And Commissioner Serbin and Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I will look into it with council and staff and see what might be possible short of a meeting. Hillary, seriously, thank you for that because it's well worth noting. Commissioner Pons?
Yes, just one point regarding lessons learned and fast tracking that process. You know, I really don't need, see the need to have a discussion about it. I think it's a staff responsibility to come up with a template, a format and a process to capture those lessons learned. And so I moved it, we just move it to the staff, let them do what they do best and then give us the proposal at the next meeting. And let's just start captioning those lessons learned. I really don't want to take every discussion and turn it into another discussion at the next meeting. Especially something that we should have started at the first meeting. So let's just move forward with it and say, staff, go out and do the great work that you normally do.
Let me just say, I, I take your point and I agree with it. I'm hopeful that the mentions we made of lessons learned, I think going back to December are still on everyone's minds. But in keeping with what Hillary just mentioned, if there is an action required for this, and I don't want to prejudge what staff may recommend, I want to be able to raise it. But Commissioner Pons, I completely agree and I think all commissioners agree. Whatever we're actually doing, we should be compiling and having those lessons learned in mind and use them as agenda items require during our ongoing discussions without a specific item on that. So thank you for that. I have Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Hanson, please.
Thank you. I want you to notice that I figured out how to raise my virtual hand, thanks to my grandson. Okay, so I just would like to request that this. Okay, so I just would like to request that this issue of calendaring public events be placed on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can be looking throughout the summer, even up through September, perhaps to see, so that we can get those items on our calendar and deal with this topic of how we go about populating them with commission members.
I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So I will ask staff to take a look at that and maybe prepare something for our next meeting on some opportunities. I would ask, also ask commissioners to please provide events that you know of that might be relevant or might be a good opportunity to raise some of these kinds of issues. We certainly now have extensive materials available for basic education from the educational tour, so we can be speaking with one voice and one clear message. So Commissioner Hanson, thank you for that. Barbara, is that clear enough?
Yes, it is. Thank you. And the only thing, if I may, Chair Baiman, that I would add is, you know, hopefully at the end of this month, we'll be able to announce the outreach and engagement, our, you know, our contractor, and so that may also tie into these efforts.
Absolutely. I think, though, as several commissioners have said, we don't want to lose time just because of the nature of that process, which is, again, no one's fault, but should not inhibit us from reaching out. So thank you for that, Commissioner Hanson, for that. Please.
We also want to see our faces at those meetings, don't we? I do.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Well, maybe not my face, but yeah.
Even yours, David.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things to note. With, with these events that we're, we might consider planning in the future, attending, having a presence at, we might consider coordinating with the other, maybe the City of San Diego's IRC or, or these other IRCs that are doing, that, that would be relevant to the jurisdictions that we're operating in. And, and maybe we could have a joint presence at these events and, and be more relevant to the attendees. So maybe that's one suggestion, Barbara, is to maybe, if you, if that's a thing that, that's possible to sort of, you know, communicate across channels with, with those folks. And then to pick up on Commissioner Pons' comment on lessons learned. I, I had been, I had read the CRC's 2011 Lessons Learned report. I think there's a lot of really, really useful thing, you know. I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate to consider forming yet another ad hoc committee to do something about, you know, to incorporate these suggestions. But I, I think it's important enough that there's, that somehow we need to have a mechanism to, to, to consider these suggestions. I mean, if we're going to say that, oh, it's important for us to memorialize the lessons learned that we're going through in this process, I think, you know, it would probably do us, it would, we, we should, you know, walk the walk and, and learn from the lessons that, that the others had learned who preceded us.
It's a point well taken. And whether we do that in some sort of holistic manner focused on previous lessons learned or how we've been doing it, where in some of our trainings, we've heard from past participants and current experts, this is what they saw in the past that worked exceptionally well or exceptionally not well. Again, I think there's plenty on that in the current training continuum. But I take the point, we need to keep integrating that and building that, especially as we start moving into actual consideration of data, drawing of maps, public hearings, and a host of the other activities we're going to need to be doing. So it's a very good point. Welcome. Thank you for that.
And are we on the point where we're, where you're asking for potential future agenda items? Okay, okay, thank you. So just another one that, that's been kind of lingering in my mind, which is the RPI analysis. So I think if, I don't, I don't know how we might want to properly consider doing this, but I would be more comfortable if we did have some discussion about hiring an independent consultant or counsel that would be able to render an opinion on, on our demographers' RPI analysis and whether it's sufficient and, and good. And then also, I think, in, related to having our racially polarized voting council, council, we ought to also consider whether we want to start thinking about potential litigation council and, and how we want to position ourselves for hiring, potentially hiring another independent firm as, as a subsequent council to, to, to represent us in potential litigation.
Good. Thank you for that. Some of that is already under consideration. I, I don't want to go too far in discussing that today, but I do think you're right. We're going to have to have a discussion of that at the right moment. Other ideas, comments? Very good. We move on then to adjournment. And with thanks to all commissioners, members of the public who attended, staff, counsel, that concludes the business before the independent redistricting commission this afternoon. Our next meeting of the commission will be on Thursday, June 24th, at 5:30 PM, one of our evening meetings. This meeting is adjourned at 4:18 PM. Commissioner Chen, thank you. I, I look forward to hearing your closing credits music at our next meeting. But thanks again to the commission. Please keep an eye on emails for various other pieces coming, including on the SB 594 issues. But with that, have a great weekend and a great time until we see you again. Thanks.